Hi, welcome to the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, May 14th, 2015, 7:30 PM, Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Manier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
The records show Commissioner Reinhardt is absent.
May we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I motion to adopt the agenda of May 14th, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on to adopt the consent agenda, would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda? So, do we?
Make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar and approve the three draft action minutes.
Second?
Second, I was absent in one of those.
Right. So, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, oral communications. Welcome, everyone. Would anyone from the audience like to address the commission at anything not on the agenda? No? Okay. So, written communications. We've received a magazine, the May 2015 edition of Western City, and I think that's it. On to new business. Applicant 119 San Benito Road, variance V-1-15 and grading permit EX-1-15 to allow construction of a new single-family home with a maximum height of 30 feet, where 28 feet is the maximum height permitted, and to allow 157 cubic yards of site grading, including the removal of 98 cubic yards of soil from the site. Quincy Bragg applicant, Quincy Bragg and Sarah Fitzgerald owners, APN 007-392-020.
Good evening. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing 640-square-foot, single-family home and build a new 2,115-square-foot home on this through lot with an 18% slope. In order to implement the project as design, the applicant is requesting approval of a variance to allow the new home a maximum height of 30 feet, or 28 feet is the maximum permitted, as well as grading permit review to allow 157 cubic yards of site grading to accommodate the new structure. And this includes export of 98 cubic yards of soil, and the trigger for planning commission review is 50 cubic yards of export. Just as a point of interest, this project is currently undergoing building permit review, so it has already gone through a round of review at Department of Public Works, as well as the Building Department. It's on hold until this app - planning application is acted on. And the city engineer has found the grading plans to meet the requirements for grading permit review. In terms of the existing site, you can see here, the Visitation Avenue frontage is considered the rear lot line, while the San Benito Road frontage is the front lot line. No covered onsite parking is currently provided, and the home encroaches into the front and side setback here, you can see in that corner. In terms of the project proposal, the site plan here demonstrates the different site improvements, as well as the new home footprint, which is placed respectfully of all setbacks. Two partially onsite parking spaces would be provided on the Visitation Avenue side of the lot, and two covered spaces would be provided in a garage at the lower level, also access from that Visitation Avenue frontage. The front of the site would see some significant landscaping improvements as well, and a new retaining wall at the front lot line would help support some of those plantings there and give more usable space. And just a brief look at the grading plan, which is a little hard to read in this small size, but generally provides you with a good idea of where most of the excavation is proposed, which is the footprint of the new garage, as well as the driveway. And you can also see here, slightly, a protected tree, which is located in a circle here, which is in the front yard along the east lot line. That's the protected oak tree. This excerpt from the elevations show the segment of the house that exceeds the height limit. So you can see it's limited to just this elevation facing Visitation, where the two-car garage is at the lower level with two floors of living space above. All other segments of the home and portions of the home are well below the 28-foot height limit. So, the required findings to approve a variance are listed in the staff report extensively. I won't review them again here. In terms of special circumstances applicable to the subject property, its tropical shape is fairly unique, with the west lot line significantly shorter than the east. It also has an uneven northeast cross-slope down from San Benito Road to Visitation Avenue. The midpoint of the rear lot line fronting Visitation is about four feet higher than the surrounding grade to the east. And the adjacent grade to the west is more gentle slope. So it's a fairly uneven-sloped lot. You can see in the site photos the extreme grade difference between that northeast corner, going back to San Benito Road. As a result of these unique topographic features, the northeast wing of the home would measure, again, 30 feet from the adjacent driveway grade. Privileges enjoyed by other homes in the vicinity deprived of the subject property. Without approval of the variance, the property would be deprived of the ability to be developed with a home of similar scale and massing. Many homes on adjacent properties, even right along that block of San Benito Road on the downslope side, exhibit significant height, scale, massing that are very similar, if not greater, in scale to the project proposal. And in terms of conditions, staff has recommended a condition of approval that would require additional articulation of that elevation exceeding the height limit, just to mitigate that excessive height. And moving on to the grading permit. The commission adopted guidelines in 2003 to provide a sort of guide for review and grading permits and contain the findings required to recommend approval. This proposal would meet all three required findings that are applicable to this project. The proposed site grading is limited to the footprint of the new garage and driveway in order to fit the new structure within the natural topography. And the only exposed retaining wall, again, would be that new wall in the front yard, right along the front lot line, be about just over six feet, with a 42-inch railing as required by the building code. This wall is downslope of the public right-of-way. It wouldn't be readily visible from people on the sidewalk or on the road. It would also be partially hidden by a landscaping bed that would go its entire length along the wall. Again, I mentioned that protected oak tree in the front yard. The applicant has designated a tree protection zone, TPZ, around the roots, the root zone of this tree, to protect it from site grading during construction. Staff has recommended a conditional approval to require protective fencing to be installed delineating the TPZ to protect the tree during demolition and construction as well. So in conclusion, staff is recommending conditional approval of this application, subject to the conditions and findings of approval. The draft was resolution before you. And that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions?
Would you like to ask questions now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to s - can you hear me?
If maybe lean a little closer, I'll pull it.
Okay. I wanted to say that I met one of the applicants at a social gathering, but that is not going to - and she told me she was going to appear tonight, but that is not in any way - we didn't discuss the variance at all. Okay. I do have a question. Well, no, I guess... I guess you actually answered it, so now I don't have a question. I'm page G 1.5. I was just a little confused by one of the chart. It said, where it says "front", it says 16 feet 5 inches. And then it says seven feet. The next minimum and maximum is 7 feet 7, 9, 16 inches. This, does this sound like it exceeds the standard? I just can't understand that particular line, where it says "front".
It does, it complies with the standard. So, it's additional, it's setback more than, more than the minimum. So it is compliant with that standard.
Oh, it's more than the minimum? Minimum would be seven feet?
Right. And that's the block average, which our code does allow for using that block average setback in cases where most of the lots have been developed for a certain amount of time, which is the case in this lot, in this case.
And then at the articulation?
Oh, I should actually note, this is not, that is a mistake in the staff report. I'm sorry, I should have corrected that at the outset. They are complying with the articulation requirements. So, the staff's recommendation for additional articulation, I think that's probably a subject for discussion with the applicant as well, they having some different ideas how that can be achieved without structural changes. But they are currently compliant with articulation requirements.
So the requirement, additional articulation required is by the staff?
They're meeting the minimum standard.
Yeah, but this staff wants more articulation, is that the?
It's one solution, perhaps. It's something that we've recommended for your consideration. And I think the applicant has some other ideas as well.
Can I explain what do you mean by "one solution"?
Well...
It's meeting the requirement, then what's the, what's there that's not resolved?
I think in this case, where we're asking for a variance from the height limit, the line of thinking would be how to reduce the impact of something that may be, you know, over, over the maximum height. So one way to do that is to provide additional articulation or changes in the face of the wall to make it appear not so tall. So that was more suggestion from staff. Related to the height of the wall.
Did the staff provide any, any kind of, you know, suggestion how it can be achieved?
There are several, several ways it could be achieved. I think would be up to the applicant and to you to decide what the best, the best route that would be.
I'm just trying to figure it out. If they meet the articulation, then why we asking more? And I guess the planning commission can ask that definitely, if you feel that way. But in order to do that, we need to have this substantial backing to see why we doing that. One of the reasons you mentioned was the, the extra height. But how the articulation going to, to reduce the impact of that, that need to be explored. Whatever articulation we do, the main purpose, we asking more is because we want to reduce the impact. And how it can be reduced, I think we should, do you have any idea? Or staff has any idea?
I think we could have a few ideas, but I'm not sure. We recommend, we're not recommending a specific.
The staff is recommending, so I think they should have some kind of information as to what, what need to be done. And we will ask this, we will definitely ask the applicant also. But, you know, normally when you, when you suggest something, you have to have some kind of a suggestion as to what you're looking at it, or what you need to do.
If you, we could have that discussion now, or you could wait until you hear the public testimony? And then we could have that as part of the discussion at that?
Yeah, I don't mind. I just wanted to make sure that the staff has done some homework. Just make sure that it's from their end, they are covered. Okay.
Shall we open it up?
And the, the city engineer has no objection about the stiffness of the, it's all, they're gonna be almost pretty 26% slope.
He has not had any objections to the proposed site grading. He's accepted all the work to date, I think.
Okay, so in that regard, did he require any kind of a slope stability analysis or anything?
Not, not to my knowledge, but the applicant, I think, could speak a little more onto their review with the Public Works Department.
Okay, yes. So that information will be covered by the applicant, I assume?
Because it's an active building permit, he's authorized it for your review, essentially. Grading plans meet his requirements for, for grading plans. He's accepted those.
Okay.
It comes to further.
One more question I have is that whatever material they're going to excavate, some of it will be, will be sent out, and it will be sent to an off-site, right? In this case, they are increasing the, the slope. So are they filling it up as it, as they go up? But again, I guess, I guess that was...
The change, the change in slope is primarily due to, the way that our code measures slope is take, you take the midpoints of the front and rear lot lines, and you do calculate the percentage of the difference in vertical height and horizontal distance. Because the, the way the slope is currently, the way the natural topography is, is so uneven, when you measure it from midpoint to midpoint, it results in an 18% slope. The grading work that they're going to be doing will kind of be evening out those grades at those midpoints. So...
The 18% is not the maximum? Is it an average over this?
No, it's their existing, existing.
Yeah, but the number 18% is the maximum slope they have? Or is it the average of the whole?
It's calculated, like I was saying about from midpoint to midpoint, the vertical versus the horizontal distance. That's how we calculate slope per the code. It's not an average.
No, it's a... Now generally, what you do is you have a slope at a single point versus an average slope. The average slope will be, you divide that along the whole length of it.
Sure, yeah.
So then it will give you a sort of an average of the whole site. So this will be average 26% now?
No.
Or is it at the maximum 26% at one point?
The, the way the code works, it is a point-to-point measurement.
I see.
You take a single point, as Julia's illustrating, you literally take the elevation at that point, and then you...
To this point.
And then you just figure out the distance, right? And then you determine the slope. So it's not an average natural slope over the entire lot. It's a, it's a single straight-line calculation. And that's the code definition of how we calculate slope.
So it will be from minimum to maximum divided by the distance?
Correct.
Okay. I would have preferred to have the average slope in situations like we have in Brisbane, but the code, whatever the code requires, we have to follow that. Because in some cases, you may have a little hump, and that can cause the whole, you know, so...
Which, which is kind of the case here for this property.
Yeah. Okay.
Shall we open it up?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, would anyone like to speak to this issue? The applicant?
Hi, my name's Jerry Cool.
Hi.
I'll answer your question a little more clearly. What we have is, up at this point, it's a 23% slope. At this point, it's about 20 and a half. Now, where they're measuring from the center to the center, what happened was, is the person before them actually just cut this area out for a parking space and dumped it here. So what that meant was, they changed, the points that they're actually measuring from is now 18, because the actual natural slope from here to here is the, the average would be about 21 and a half. But because they took this material and dumped it here, now that they raised this point to 18 feet. So the average slope of the entire lot is about 21.5. If that answered your question a little better.
Average slope.
So, if they could have, you know, if they, if that, they would have dumped that dirt just a little farther the other way, this wouldn't have been an issue. We wouldn't have needed the variance. So it's because of how, the actual natural slope of the hill is closer to, it's over 20. It's just what they did to make that little parking pad. It's what now, the way the code is written, that's how they have to measure it. And that's why we needed the variance.
Thanks for clearing.
Sure. Any questions?
Well, I think Commissioner Manier wanted to know where the dirt is gonna go.
Where it's gonna go?
Uh-huh. Does anybody have a clue?
There's, yeah, there's, there's dirt recyclers.
No, what I was thinking, what I was actually after was the amount of dirt that's gonna be replaced with, and increasing the slopes, or are you?
Well, actually, we're not increasing the slope.
Importing the dirt, the dirt, or are gonna be?
Again, it's deceptive, how, because of how it's measured.
That's why I'm asking.
Where, where the, where they measured the points. So technically, we're not increasing the slope anywhere. All we're doing is we're leveling it back to where it was originally, for the most part.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's clear, so...
Does that make more sense?
Yeah, makes a lot of sense.
That makes a lot of sense.
And anything else you want to say about the project?
As far as the articulation goes, we have a little bump out on the front now, and we're basically gonna expand it a little more to give it a little more articulation. On the elevations, if I can show the elevations. Where you see the little star area there? Now, we're gonna change the roof line to match the roof line above it, and we're gonna bring it out a little deeper, so it gives it a little more articulation.
Are you gonna put any kind of a horizontal stripping or?
Any like belly bands or something? It's not really, well, we have, we have a secondary finish below. So, the area below, there's, there's planking above, and then there's the stucco work below, so that kind of breaks them.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is, is there any way you can make it look like shorter than what it is? And there's some kind of a treatment you can do?
To the building?
To the buildings, to make it look like...
Well, partially, that's what that, that's what we were trying to accomplish originally with the two finishes. So now, when you look at the building, you know, your eye will catch, you know, the horizontal lines, and then the lower half will pretty much kind of go away. That's the concept. And then they, we have a little more articulation above.
Yeah, I don't remember whether the, whether the horizontal or the vertical lines bring these.
Horizontal makes it look taller, vertical, or horizontal makes it look squatter. Verticals make it, that's why. People just don't wear horizontals, horizontal lines, you know? Makes me look wider. Now, these, the horizontal lines actually, you know, brings it down.
Are those, they're, they're, they're gonna be stucco or what?
The lower part, oh, I'm sorry, I shut it off. From here down will be stucco. As you can see, it's specked. From there up, this will be paneling, or this will be siding.
With, with that many horizontal line, don't you think it makes it a little bit more busy?
Makes it more busy?
Yeah, I mean...
That's how wide this...
I mean, how far you gonna have, how?
How wide are they?
Either there...
I don't know, they're like somewhere between six and eight inches? Or six inches?
Because on a tall building, if you put a very narrow ones, it's gonna look really busy. You may have to do something to break up the whole horizontal, that many lines going through.
Well, that's what we were hoping, that the, that the stucco did below, because that way you're only seeing two stories. Technically, when you look at it, you're really, your eye is gonna be focusing on the horizontal, so you're really only gonna be looking at two stories. The hope is that the lower half will kind of go away.
Maybe between the two windows, if you can put some kind of a trimming, trim, to make it look, you know?
The two windows on the side, first floor?
Yeah, on this front. Top window and bottom window, if you can put some kind of a treatment there.
Treatment as?
As some kind of a trim or, you know, this...
Are you speaking of, I'm, I'm just not clear what, when you're speaking.
I'm talking about that.
You need to?
No, no, on the, between the two vertical, yeah.
I was actually thinking...
You mean like a belly band?
I was thinking that we'd actually trim the window. The siding was going to be a hardwood, not EPE, but a filler to EPE. And then I was thinking of trimming around the windows to, to give them more of a feeling.
More depth.
So as, as a natural hardwood left unpainted, we actually have more of a...
Excuse me, if, if you can speak into the mic.
Because of mine.
So as, as a hardwood, that's going to be left natural, not gonna be painted, so it'll have a feeling of warmth, and it'll also have a feeling of patina, which means that it's not just a solid wall, a solid cliff. It's going to, it's going to have this sense to it. And also, it's not really shown on this drawing, but the, the siding will be actually slightly bigger. It'll be set out, so there will be a shadow line underneath that. And we, and if you really want, we could put a, a horizontal line. We could put a horizontal line here.
And that will help also, yeah, if you put a little thicker...
We could set a, a line of stone in, for instance, underneath that. It would look really good.
That will make it a little better.
And I'd be happy to do that.
And can, can I get the pointer? What did I do?
I think you have to go down there.
Now, how do you? Okay, what I was thinking in this area, if you can put some kind of a nice decorative...
Maybe, shall I move the star there?
Not the star, but, you know, some kind of flaw, you know?
I could probably come up with something.
That, that will break these all, all horizontal lines.
I could probably come up with something. I'm pretty good at that sort of thing.
Yeah, you can do, you know, this or over here. That will make it a little bit less busy, horizontal lines.
Okay.
And as far as...
This, this one. There'll be, because this is setback, because this is setback, it's going, there's going to be a very heavy shadow line here.
Yeah, that's true.
So it's gonna be, so this is going to be very much in the, in the back, because it's heavy articulation on this face.
If you put, you know, those, on the foam type of trims, you know, they have all different shapes. You can put it all around that.
We could definitely also, if you like, we could get a vine to grow up here. How would that be?
That will be okay, good too.
Okay, we can do that.
I'm just trying to explore. I'm trying, I'm not trying to be designer for you.
No, no, but, but we could definitely get a vine going through here.
Okay.
I'm good at those.
Maybe that will help the staff also, thinking what they additional, they were thinking about. And, and the wall beneath the railing, that will be stucco also, right?
That's actually about 14 feet back.
Yeah, but that will be stucco also?
No, that's, no.
This wall here.
Does this one work here? The, this is not, there's, the, there's a retaining wall here. And this is actually soil. There'll be plants here, and then there'll be a hole underneath this deck. And I might put a little trellis thing.
It's a little deceiving here.
Right.
I thought there was a wall.
Because this is a simplified drawing. But, but, but there's a retaining wall here, and then there'll be planting here. And, and as you can see on the plan, there are dry stack stone walls here. You see, so these are dry stack stone walls, and there's a dry stack here, making the transition between these stairs and that. But it's, that's a simple technical elevation.
Yeah, so if you can put some kind of plants to cover that hollow space, that would be really good. Because in the picture, it looks like it's a stucco wall.
I'm also thinking about trying to put a bay laurel tree, get a bay laurel tree established back there, because we've got a rather ugly utility pole, and I'd love to have a bay laurel in front of it. Then I can have two protected trees on the side.
Think about it, once you put it, you can remove it.
I know.
Would anyone else like to address the commission? Please step forward.
Hi, I'm Anne Perdenas. I have a question in the report. Can you clarify? You stated that there were other properties that exceeded the 28-foot limit?
Hi. So, the adjacent properties, so 125, which is directly next to the property, is over 30 feet in height. And that property does have a over 20% slope. But just in terms of scale and massing, it's very similar. 131 as well as 135, so on that downslope side of San Benito.
Okay, so there's two adjacent? Two properties adjacent or just one?
Three.
Three, okay.
Yeah.
One other question. On, do we have an elevation of the east or west? So we can see how far this elevation goes back?
I did not have one in the PowerPoint presentation, but I'm more than happy to give you a plan set to look at.
Okay. Okay, so the red dimension line that says 30 feet? On the west elevation? Yeah, right, right below, west elevation. Okay, is that, that is 30 feet there? Okay, so it's 30 feet on the, at the tip of the... Okay, okay.
Sorry, it's not on mic. So all these other areas are underneath that 28-foot height limit.
Okay.
The only area is here that it is measured at 30.
Okay, one other question. Have any other neighbors raised any objections to this?
I believe we had a neighbor from across the street who I think might be here in the audience. I don't know if she wanted to speak as well. But other than that, I have not heard from any other neighbors.
Thank you, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to? Anyone else from the audience?
I'm Leslie Davis. I live at 128 San Benito. And my question is, on the San Benito side, there is an existing cyclone fence that's approximately 40 inches high possibly. What will that look like at the end of the project?
Okay. So this retaining wall will have a curb on it, which will stop water from getting onto the site. Then on top of that, we will put a fence, which will be at the height that the building inspectors want us to have to protect this drop, right? So it'll be a fence, it would be a regular residential garden fence. Does that tell you enough? And then here, we've got a dry garden to protect this tree. So this will be open and have a rockery, so that this tree is protected.
So, once the existing house is removed, how much excavation is gonna be done in that area?
This, the house, as far as I remember, is about here. So when we take this house away, that's good, yes, look here, you can see. So there's the house. So when this house and all its fabulous foundations come out, have you seen them? We're not gonna have very much in the way of excavation to do. This will just be pulled down, this retaining, yeah. Yeah, this will be shored up here, so we do as little, because we've got to protect the road. So this will be shored, and then we will put the, that will be the first thing we do, is to protect the top of the site, will be to put that retaining wall in, and get the whole thing stable again, and give you back your parking spaces. Okay, does that answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Francis, and I'm at 113 San Benito. They'll be on the west side of the piece of property, with Sarah and Quincy. I was curious how many loads of dirt would be coming out?
It's 98 yards.
You have to... It's 98 yards, and it'll depend on the excavation contractor and what size of vehicle he's taking out.
So what are you presuming that might be? So approximately 10 trucks or so? 10, even if it's 20, that seems like a very small amount, really, for the neighbor, you know, taking it out in a day or two. So the other question I might have is, we have an existing retaining wall between our two properties. What would happen to that?
What, I haven't, because this retaining wall is knee-deep in ivy, I have, this is the setback, and your stairs are about here.
The dotted line is the actual property line?
Yeah, property line, and your stairs run to about here.
Correct.
So this is halfway up your concrete stairs. So this is running up to your retaining wall. I've assumed that we will pick up at the end of your retaining wall, and that we are going to honor the level on your lawn here.
So what do you mean by that?
That you are not gonna change anything.
So we're gonna leave the existing retaining wall?
As much as we can. We don't know what's gonna happen when this comes down.
Right, so that's where I'm addressing the question.
Right, we don't know. We don't know what we're going to find when this comes down.
I understand that our property, the existing retaining wall is on your property.
Yes, it's a bit here.
So are you gonna be coming back to your actual property line with a retaining wall?
No, we're going to leave you with the joyful use of this piece of lawn. And we're just going to put a retaining wall and fence in here, on the existing, what is assumed currently to be the existing boundary. Which we find is...
As a moving target.
Does that make sense?
The existing boundary is the property line, what it is. Or the retaining wall that was there when we moved into the house.
No, this is, this is the boundary.
That's the property line.
That's our property line, but it's in the middle of your lawn.
Exactly, two feet past the...
Right, but we're not going to, we're not going to, we're gonna let you go on using that.
That's great.
Yes!
I understand that.
Okay. So we're gonna put a retaining wall that meets up with your retaining wall there.
So what I was asking, what's gonna happen to the existing retaining wall?
It's gotta go.
It's gonna go, well, that would've been a simple answer the first time around. So let's not beat around the bush.
Okay, yes, it's gotta go. It's gotta go, because it's integral with the house.
Okay, so from the existing wall, how far over are you gonna go?
We're going to stay where it is.
We're gonna stay where it's at.
Because that's where your retaining wall is at the moment.
Right.
And we will talk to you about it when we're setting this out, you know.
That's great. I thought it would've been good to address it today here.
Okay.
Or we could've addressed it a week ago, and I've had to do this here today.
Well, I'm sorry about that. But I, I was, all we were doing was retaining the soil that we had to here, setting up a situation very similar to the one you've got here. We're retaining against the thing, and then building something here which is stable, and then has privacy.
That all sounds good. So the retaining wall that's, our retaining wall that encroaches on your property line,
We're leaving.
How will that be?
We're leaving.
So you're sure of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's there.
Well, so is the existing retaining wall. But things come up.
Right.
And I'm just trying to figure out where you are.
Do you mean this retaining wall? Or do you mean this retaining? Let's call this, we call this retaining wall A, we call this retaining wall B.
Okay.
So this retaining wall, well, A stays exactly as it is.
Okay.
We meet up with it here, and we take over, we deal with whatever level changes we've got with this, right? The house goes, which means that the retaining, which is attached to the house here, will probably have to get demolished. But we won't know what happens to that until we start taking this house apart.
Sure, I understand that.
Okay, and then we will put back something here, which we all agree with.
That's great. The other question I might have is the area around the telephone pole in the front, which we both find probably hideous.
Uh-huh.
So I was curious where it is on the placement of the...
So it's there.
Plan.
It's there.
So where we have that existing cement area in the front?
Yeah, that's here.
Right. So I know we've always wanted that to come out, and you probably would like that to come out.
Um, it's possible. I was thinking I would build around it, because I didn't know you wanted it to come out.
Okay.
We can certainly discuss how that works.
Sure.
And I don't think either the building inspector or anybody's interested.
In front of the telephone pole, that would be city parking?
That is, that is the existing sidewalk.
Which is used as parking currently.
Which is used as parking currently, along with half of this bank, which they're not gonna be able to use anymore.
Well, no one parks behind the telephone pole.
No, but they're up on this, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So there would be one or two city parking spots there?
Nope. I, well...
Is that gonna be?
That's city...
Is that gonna be new sidewalk? Is that gonna be?
It's existing, well, saving the existing sidewalk.
You're gonna leave the existing.
Is that where we cut through it for services?
I think you've answered my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm impressed by the homeowner. She's done a good, thorough...
I think it's great all the neighbors came down to sort things out tonight. It's a good use of the planning commission.
Hi.
I live at 125 San Benito. And I'm wondering, what are they gonna do on my side? By the tree and stuff? What's gonna happen there?
I will come back.
And through the chair, we've had a request from our viewing public for everyone to try to speak a little closer to the microphone, so...
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, what are we gonna, by the tree there, that big tree and stuff? What's gonna go there? Are you gonna put a retaining wall or something there next to my house?
Sorry, could I speak?
Yeah.
This, this is our boundary.
Yeah.
Your fence is here. It's further back. Your fence is back here.
That fence was there before. That was on their property.
Okay, but...
I have nothing to do with the fence.
But it turns out that it's actually on your property. So I have made no proposals for this piece of land at the moment, because I don't own it, you do.
I only, I only, and three feet past my property line.
Unfortunately, that's not true, because we've had this surveyed, and this is where that property line is. It's been registered, and...
So in other words, I don't quite get what you're gonna do there. I mean, you're gonna come up to my house?
No, no.
Or you're gonna leave that all open?
At the moment, it's in limbo. What I was going to do is, after we've finished, after we've finished this, I was going to come and talk to you about this piece of land that you own, and ask you what you'd like us to do to make it stable and nice. I am proposing on my piece of land here, our piece of land here, to have a slope of natural soil that does not affect, I'm gonna pull out what concrete I've got here, and so that the tree roots can breathe. I'm going to put back soil, and then put rocks and other, a dry garden here. I was going to offer you that I would do the same for you here, and we could take this fence away if you wanted it to. But it's your choice.
That fence is on your property. It's not on mine. It goes along, and then goes around a tree, yeah. But that, that area...
I'm really sorry. A surveyor has taken this, has measured this, and in fact, you own that piece of land.
That's something new to me. I lived here all my life.
I understand. It was gobsmack, it was gobsmacking to us, because we had to move our house 18 inches nearer to Trish and Francis.
Yeah, but I, I just can't believe that, that deal.
Nor could we, but the surveyor is very certain about it.
And that tree, that's on, that's on your property.
It's half and half. It's half and half.
It's not half and half. It's mostly on your property.
Well, can we resolve this? Because it's something that...
I am, I'm going to come to you and talk to you about what we do between our two properties.
Maybe they, maybe they can go through the staff and figure it out. Would that be possible, right?
That there, that tree is, I got about that much room between the tree and my house. So I know that tree is on the other property, matter of fact. But I never had any trouble with the owners before.
You're not gonna have any trouble with us either. We're going to make something there that you want to see.
Well, what we can do is, maybe I recommend that you get together with the staff and figure this out.
Is that gonna be concrete wall there where that one line is, down by my fence?
So your fence is here.
Yeah, it's...
Right? And so I'm, I don't want to undermine your fence. I don't want to upset it. So I've put a dry stack wall, not a concrete wall, a dry stack stone wall here, which I will then plant with Californian natives above it, if that's okay with you.
I just can't see that, that plan. The way, the way that shows... That, right now, they've got that dug out.
Yeah.
My concern is, when they come and start excavating, it's gonna undermine my foundation and stuff in my house.
No, it won't.
It won't?
We're not touching this wall at all. We're taking, we're taking some out of here, but whatever we do, if we start going down, we will shore it up. It will not undermine you in any way whatsoever. And we're, we're further away than your fence. We're not at your fence line. We're another 18 inches further away from your fence.
I just can't see what that...
We, we were gobsmacked.
Yeah, and this, this tree, the tree right now, I don't wanna see it go or nothing, but it's overgrown over the top of my roof, and it drops leaves and sap on my cars in front of my entryway.
So...
That's a problem. And it's grown so much over these years that it's...
But that tree is...
It's a constant...
That tree is protected, that tree is protected, so there's not much there in your home.
I park my cars in there, and they're full of oil and stuff. I can't keep it. I gotta cover the vents and everything.
Maybe you, maybe you can request the city, if you can remove that. If they allow that, and in exchange, you can plant something else. Some cities allow that. I don't know whether the staff will allow that or not. So you can bring your case to the city.
I just can't see that, that little deal there. I got a fence, and I got some other stuff there. If you, if the commissioners or whatever come up and take a look at the way that tree's growing over on my property, and I park my cars down there, and I gotta cover all the vents in the cars, and it's just a mess.
Yeah, I understand, we understand your concern.
I am...
But do you address that with the city?
I am, I'm actually a landscape contractor, and I will be continuing to keep this tree well-pruned. It's actually, it's probably in need of a prune in the next 18 months, so I will be doing that.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's good, that's...
Anyone else?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any more questions for the staff?
No.
Uh, with the staff, I guess I was going to ask them a question about the, that articulation, what they had in mind. Or else, whatever we discussed, does it suffice?
Certainly, um, what, what was been discussed between the, the commission and the applicant would, would meet the intent of, uh, that requirement. So, it's just a matter of perfecting it in the building permits.
Okay. So, does the applicant has any objection to whatever recommendations we come up with for the articulation? Okay. I think another thing to be noted is, in one of the exhibit, it was not clear that there's a retaining wall or is, is a, just an open space. And also, the applicant mentioned that they're gonna put some kind of landscaping there, a laurel tree we're talking about, or whatever it is. So, I think that should be put in the condition also. And, uh-
Could you clarify, um-
Sure what you said.
So, the landscaping that's-
They can bring the, the front elevation. Yes, the space between the stairs and-
Here?
This area here, that whole area will be a co- will be, um, is hollow, there is no wall there. And the applicant was, uh, thinking, thinking that they're gonna put some kind of a landscaping there.
And, right, so, and I think that might be identified on the-
Right.
Plan here, Sarah, is that right?
Yeah.
Plantings, that's labeled with plantings? Here? Sorry. Um, but-
And also, the articulation we discussed, uh, I don't know whether we can, you know, require them to have those or they can come up with more creative ideas. Or whatever it is, it should reflect in the, in the record.
Yeah, I would suggest we not try to come up with a design solution.
I don't wanna design for them, but I give them some ideas.
Exactly.
The staff can-
Absolutely.
Work with them and come up with a solution that's best for everybody.
Well, it sounds like the applicant has a, a pretty strong idea of what she wants.
Yeah. Well, I'm impressed by the applicant more than the, uh, the architect, actually.
She's the architect.
She's an architect?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, I'm sorry about that. I see. That's why you were so confident, I was kinda surprised, I said, you know, she knows everything, you know? That's good, so, no, no insult meant to you, okay? I mean-
Are we ready to make our decision?
Yeah, I think, uh, we, I will make a motion to approve that with the additional discussion we had. Uh, maybe they will, you know, modify the, the conditions of approval accordingly.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, have a wonderful time building your house.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good house then.
Very excited to have you. Thank you, everyone. So, on to our workshop. Amendment to the articulation element, I mean, sorry, circulation element. Study session for amendment to the circulation element of the general plan to incorporate provisions for complete streets pursuant to the Complete Streets Act of twenty, uh, zero eight.
We'll wait just a minute to start. Okay, we'll go ahead and start. This is the third Planning Commission study session on the proposed amendment to the city's circulation element. The amendment is to incorporate provisions for a complete streets consistent with the California Complete Streets Act of two thousand and eight. The purpose of this study session is to provide the commission with the draft of the proposed circulation element goals, policies, and programs altogether for your consideration and feedback. In the previous workshops, you were provided with a prelim- preliminary draft of the complete street section only, so this expands on that to include the whole element. To help inform your consideration of the draft goals, policies, and programs, I'll begin with just a, um, a few quotes that help frame the topic of complete streets, it's kind of a thirty thousand foot elevation look. And I'll touch briefly on related, uh, regulations, then a summary of the Complete Streets Act itself, and finally, some overarching considerations for the planning commission's review of the circulation element. So, with those overarching issues and trends, taking a few quotes here from, these are from the state air resources board as well as, um, OPR, the Office of Planning and Research, um, quotes. Uh, so California is, is viewed as a leader on climate change initiatives with an approach that will enable better lasting economic growth and allow Californians to continue their lifestyle. Californians driving accounts for thirty-six percent of all greenhouse gases in the state. Demo, so that's just as of, uh, just recent data, last year, that, that, that document, um, that quote came from. Then, the demographic trends predict a shift towards lower vehicle miles traveled, and especially those born between eighty-three and two thousand, so essentially teenagers up through, uh, people about thirty-two years of age are more likely to want to live in urban and walkable neighborhoods and are more open to public transportation than older Americans. So, I, I think it really speaks to a shift in, in attitudes, um, towards, away from driving and towards more walkable neighborhoods, so. But there's still much to be done in all areas to address greenhouse gas emissions. So, some related legislation, and also the planned Bay Area. First is, uh, the federal's Safe Routes to Schools program, which is actually a federal program which, um, allows for funding of safe routes to schools to encourage bicycle and pedestrian travel. So, that's for, for grade school through, uh, middle school ages that, that's targeted to. Then the state's, uh, Global Warming Solutions Act of two thousand and six, that's Assembly Bill thirty-two, which is really, it's a landmark bill, I, I would say, and, and these other, um, items really follow onto that, onto the coattails of that. So, by twenty twenty, um, to reduce, uh, emissions, greenhouse gas emissions to nineteen ninety levels, so just five years from now, and then by mid-century to have just a reduction by eighty percent of the nineteen ninety levels, so significant reductions by twenty fifty. Then, the Sustainable Communities and Climate Protection Act, which, um, essentially connects transportation planning with land use planning. And the Complete Streets Act is essentially a direct response to that, as well as Planned Bay Area, which the commission actually looked at a couple of years ago, um, here. And then finally, Steinberg, uh, twenty thirteen, which, which is still being worked out at the state level, and this represents a shift, uh, essentially away from level of service as a measure for SEQA, towards, uh, looking at, at other impacts. And so, the details of that, the guidelines through SEQA are still being worked out at the state level. And, um, so, under level of service or LOS, the emphasis is really on the free flow of, of vehicles, and so this would shift away from that. So, a little more detail on the Complete Streets Act. The, uh, OPR amended the general plan guidelines for local jurisdictions to amend circulation elements. The goals are reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, um, and making the most use of, efficient use of land use, uh, urban lands and, and the existing transportation infrastructure. And this is through reduction in vehicle miles traveled, essentially shifting from automobile to biking, walking, and public transit, and it's for compliance with SB three seventy-five. So, definition quickly here on complete streets, I won't read the whole thing, but essentially, multimodal transportation network that meets the needs of all users, and that's in a manner that's suitable to the rural suburban or urban context of the general plan. So, addressing all units, not users, not just vehicles, relative to the context. The benefits of multimodal transportation include safety, health, um, greenhouse gas emissions, yeah, as well as economic and development and cost savings. So, um, I won't read through all of these, but essentially, I, I think these are pretty self-explanatory that, that the, the more emphasis we put on, on pedestrians' safety, um, it, it really, there's a, uh, benefit to the health, getting people out more, walking more, reducing air emissions, increasing mobility for those who are not able to drive. The greenhouse gas emissions, of course, and then, um, making for more appealing neighborhoods and downtowns especially. And this we touched on in the, uh, the two previous, uh, study sessions, essentially the hierarchy of goals, policies, and programs. The goals, uh, provide that overarching aim, which there's a half a dozen goals at the beginning of the element. Policies provide that general direction on a topic, and, and programs are the implementation of that. So, the general plan is not to prescribe specific projects, it's just that general direction, a policy direction. And the city does not have control over outside agencies, so certain policies or programs reform, refer more to, to cooperation with those agencies. So, the Complete Streets Committee met over three, three meetings in December and January, and have provided their, um, recommendations, which, uh, staff is in agreement with. There's the one recommendation regarding landscaping where they got into some specificity that, that I mentioned in the agenda report, um, but otherwise, staff is in, in full agreement with their recommendations. There are some other recommended policies and programs that essentially pick up from, some of it picks up from the, uh, two thousand and eight update work that was done by the Planning Commission and City Council. And some of these are just policies or programs that have been completed and, or changes that are to be consistent with state law or, or internally consistent, so. So, there are a number of changes throughout the element that don't all fall in that, uh, section of complete streets that are also recommended. The element's been reorganized to, to, uh, capture the different aspects of complete streets, which were kind of more scattered through the element before. And there's no change to the technical performance aspects of the element. So, the, the level of service, um, if we were to get into that, that would really have environmental impacts that, that would require, uh, more, well, study under SEQA, which, which this update is not to do. So, once the state has worked out, um, the details, the guidelines for the change in LOS policy under SEQA, it may warrant another look at that. So, next steps is, uh, for the commission to provide feedback tonight, um, and then we'll schedule this for a public hearing, at which time, we'll bring the entire element forward to you. So, as it is, you, you did not see the, the text that, that would be, that would round out the element as, as well as we're looking to just update the appearance of the figures. There's no real changes to the, the streets hierarchy, there's no changes at all to that, but just to update the readability of the figures, so we'll, we'll do that. And then, um, so you'll see that at the public hearing stage, and then, um, forward your recommendation on to City Council for public hearing and adoption. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Can you explain the, the various colors ink that you use, what is what for? There's blue, green, and red?
Yes, so the, the blue is, is essentially within the complete streets, um, portion, so that's in the middle of the element, and those are the, the, um, the policies and programs, and actually, goals as well, that the, uh, Complete Streets Committee had recommended. The red are essentially all the others, except there is one orange one at the very end, which, um, the commission actually recommended, uh, back in December at, at the, uh, at the study session there. So, it wasn't specifically the wording staff came up with, but hopefully, we captured the commission's intent. I think that was something that Commissioner Cunningham had specifically brought up to look at other travel modes. The green text is, um, just sidebar notes for informational, they're not, those would be taken away, of course. Um, so they're just informational. And what is black is what's just been retained and carried forward from the nineteen ninety-four general plan.
And when I look at some of these greens, in some places, I say check with the city attorney.
Yes, that, that was actually, it was something I had a note to myself that I meant to actually check with him by now, and I, I caught it today, that, um, so, that is something we still need to check, essentially, the consistency of that policy with, with Nolan Dolan Act, which goes to nexus issues and, and, um, impact fees. So, that is one policy that I do need to check with.
Okay.
I was wondering if we could have some clarification on page H one point two six?
H one?
Two, twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
It says, "Policy C one eight, uh, encourage creation where appropriate for needed circulation improvement." No, uh, encourage creation of an assessment district where appropriate for needed circulation improvement. I have no clue what that means. Does that mean that we have to come up with funding, or, uh, or is this gonna be parking meters?
Assessment district.
Yeah.
Typically, an assessment district means that, um, the property owners within a specific area have that obligation to pay for those kind of improvements. So, that's, that's the typical kind of, uh, if they benefit from an improvement, they pay for the improvement.
Similar to bond, right?
Defined geographic area.
So, this is a bit of a softening of the nineteen ninety-four language, where it's, it said, "Create assessment di- districts," and, and it's really, since it is something that's up to those neighborhoods, it's more of a matter of encouraging them if they want to have these assessment districts, rather than the city saying, "We're going to create them."
How much success we will have on that, I doubt. Because, uh, that, that will be, you, you know, the problem with this is that the, you may have in front of your, your neighborhood here, but it's also benefiting the further down, so how far down you're gonna go? So, this, this will be a kind of a-
Yeah, I think the only real applicability this will have is to large-scale areas, you know, the-
Like the northeast ridge when it was built?
Sierra Point, um, the northeast ridge, the bayland, so the, but I, yeah, certainly in residential Brisbane, I don't think you'd ever find somebody willing to form a district to, to prove their local street.
The reason I'm asking is it's gonna affect me, in front of my house, I've been trying to get that helping turn fixed. Now, the city is gonna ask me to pay for this? That's what it means.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so we're okay with leaving the language as is?
Well, it's encourage than create, so encourage is better than create.
Now, what you were saying here is landscape should consist primarily of San Bruno mountain native plants and non-invasive drought-resistant plants. So you were feeling that perhaps you should increase it, change the language somewhat? Is the planning department thinking that the language should be slightly modified? Is that what?
Yes, I'd, I'd suggest that we could probably, and the Complete Streets recommendation would carry through to council, so council would see what they recommended. But essentially, that possible alternative would be to strike primarily of San Bruno mountain native plants and just say landscaping should consist of non-invasive drought-resistant plants. I think we could probably all...
That would be better.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the San Bruno mountain, the species may not be appropriate for the...
You know, if, if we're thinking in terms of, of water consumption, if we put in mostly San Bruno mountain native plants, then, you know, they are acclimated to this climate.
So we, we would retain the words at the end, drought-resistant plants? And, and this is something to add?
Such as, such as San Bruno mountain native plants, how about that?
I don't think there's any need to say such as, because once you say such as, then people think that that's mandatory, we have to do that, you know?
I'm not against having the San Bruno mountain native plants, but because you put it earlier, I thought we should discuss it.
No, I think if you put the, just, just the drought-resistant plants, it covers everything, including the San Bruno mountain habitat, right?
I would say so. And I, I think this is something that, that maybe the city wants to study further, you know, in terms of what that plant palette might be.
This, I guess philosophically gets into the issue too of what Ken mentioned, the idea of programs and policies and, you know, hierarchy. And when you start really defining a plant palette in the general plan, we don't really think is necessarily the right place to, to start specifying the specific limits on planting material. So again, I think philosophically, we try to avoid getting this specific in general plan policy as, as a rule.
You should keep as broad as possible in the policy program.
I have an issue with some wording, because I read it about, when my mind can't follow it and I drift off the sixth time, I go, okay. So H, page H 134, where it says Policy C 42. I, I kept reading this and my mind would wander and I kept trying to figure out why I couldn't understand it or why I couldn't keep my mind on it. So I was thinking maybe, maybe it could be rewritten in a way that...
Which one is that, C?
It's under Policy 72 that's crossed off. And then it's, it says Policy C 42. Establish criteria such that in conjunction with new development and the expansion of existing uses, transportation system management and transportation demand management measures are incorporated, such as facilities for transit pedestrians, bicycles, with the development does not work for me.
I would agree, that's a mouthful and that, that can be fixed, yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, I looked at that and I went, what? And I kept reading and I thought, oh, you know what, if you keep reading it, you're never going to get any further here. It was a stopper. So what does this mean on Policy C 45 on H 1.35? It says, in conjunction with new development and expansion of existing uses, require exactions and consider the establishment of in-lu fees to improve substandard city streets to minimum city standards? Oh, this is where you were going to check, but I, but honestly, I didn't understand what that meant anyway. I'm glad you have, you're going to check it. I still don't know what it is.
Right, I, I think we need to check the language. This, this is language that came out of the 2008 update, actually. And it essentially is changing the existing policy. But I, I think we'll, we'll need to revisit that, the, both the legality of it, as well as maybe to make this more clear.
Try to make it more comprehensible.
But aren't we doing this right now? If you, if you knew houses built, we require them to, to extend it to 20 feet wide. Does this, doesn't this follow under this?
Well, this...
At the expense of the owner?
Well, this has to do with in-lu fees, actually, so, so the, the...
They don't have to do it.
Widening of the road is a separate matter from, from this.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about up at the ridge and also Crocker Park, because there's relatively wide streets. And it sounds like we could do a little more with the streets than, than we already have. And I don't see anything in here. So it says that, you know, we want the streets to be at least 20 feet wide for the fire department. But some of these streets are actually quite wide and ample, and we could probably put a lot more in the streets than we already have, such as maybe a little bit more parking. And, you know, if we're going to be walking the trails, I, I'm going to bring this up again, and I did bring it up once before, but if we're walking the trails, what basically we have to do is we have to go park on someone's property. So we have to park at the FedEx building or, you know, if we want to go look at the, the Cypress, is it Cypress Creek? Where the frogs are or work on the frog habitat?
Cypress Lane.
Then basically, we have to park on someone's property. There's no place to park except where some other, you know, I don't, I honestly am not sure if I'm trespassing or not. You know, I'm, I'm parking in, you know, some of those, someone else's property. So what I'm wondering is, can we, if there's established trails that people are going to be running and walking their animals, working on the habitat, going on hikes? And Crocker Park basically has no parking. Is there any way that we can utilize some of that for, for specific areas that people can park so that they can actually use the trails and not be trespassing on someone else's property? Because, and, and I, I really think this is the opportunity, if we could put something in there. Last time, you know, I didn't hear much enthusiasm about the idea, but still.
The Crocker Park has, you know, the heavy truck traffic, so I don't think the, the 20 feet minimum will be sufficient for that.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe we're getting a few things sort of, maybe we can sort of tease them apart and see what's covered in here and what you think is sort of missing. Right now, there's a new, if you looked at the Complete Streets section, H 1-28, there's a new policy, C 21.
What page is it?
128.
1-28.
Oh, I'm sorry, 128, okay.
Policy C 21, seek to retrofit existing roadways to create complete streets. So that gets at maybe part of your issue about if you think roads are wider than sort of they need to be. Are there other uses, whether it be a bike lane or public parking or what have you, that could be accommodated or a wider sidewalk? I think that would sort of fall into that policy as it is.
If we could put in a language to address the fact that in certain parts of town, there actually is not a, a place to park except on trespassing on, on some business owner's land to actually go work on the habitat. And this, you know, I don't, I don't know where we could put it, but I would like to see if we could put it in there so that we could maybe start something. For years, we've kind of danced around, you know, when we're working on the frog habitat at Cypress Creek, we sort of dance around from one place to the other so that we don't get the, the neighbors upset with us.
So I, I think there's two components of it. One John touched on already is the Policy C 21, the, the first program underneath that, 21A refers to providing greater connectivity between key areas of the city, such as, but not limited to, between Northeast Ridge, Sierra Point and Central Brisbane. So essentially connecting these different areas up. So I think that's part of it. And the other part is, is in the parking section, that maybe we need to add something there to...
Yeah, we could probably, you know, maybe a policy to look at adding or finding public parking in areas currently not served or something where, you know...
Right.
Without getting, again, specific as to where it would be, but just a policy level that underserved areas to provide that opportunity.
I mean, you know, it is a real problem. I, I know that Mountain Watch works with that all the time. And it's only going to become a bigger problem because people like these paths, you know, we're trying to show them off. And so...
Great points.
Maybe that could go somewhere near the Policy C, C point 38, where you talk about improved public parking opportunities. But here specify Central Brisbane, so maybe no specificity or specificity in a certain
And I had one more thing that I think... Oh, I wanted to say, I'm happy that on page 1.20, on page 23, that Policy C, C dash 5, that we have investigate and pursue alternative means of access and egress to Sierra Point and investigate additional emergency access alternatives. I'm glad that went in. I feel that it's only going to become more important over the years as Sierra Point becomes built out more. So thank you. And that, I think, is all I want to bring up.
Commissioner Munir, anything from you?
Is this the place where we can address the, some of the steep streets, something can be done to, and with the very tight turning radiuses? Would that be, is that covered somehow?
I'd have to search a little bit. I know there's, as I recall, there's something in here about mid-block connections. Are you talking about for pedestrian access?
I'm just talking about the general streets too. Some of the streets are very steep.
You could probably...
Various helping turns and, you know, potentially dangerous, even though there may not be history of accidents, but I think in our proactive plan, we should address that too.
There's already, if you look at, on page 24, Policy C 9 speaks about following factors during plan review, applying to residential, residential hillside and commercial streets, grade topography. So I don't know if you want to get something more specific than that. If you're talking about sort of pre-existing conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so, so again, sort of consider opportunities to enhance or improve?
Yeah.
Yeah. We can come up with some...
You can go on the funding sources, also explore the funding to, to fix the existing unsafe.
Okay. We can, yeah, that's good.
I finally got the response from Randy regarding that particular, you know, issue I have. And he is looking strictly from the point of your federal standard. And if you look at the federal standard, they are very general, they not apply to a specific situation. So if you try to follow that, then none of these streets are unsafe. But we know they are unsafe and we don't want to wait until the accident happened. Because all of those streets, the only way it triggers is when the accidents happen. So it's after, after the fact, not before. So what I want to do here is put some kind of a language where we start looking before the fact and trying to find the appropriate funding sources somehow to get those, those things done, even though they, they may meet the federal standard.
Okay. We'll take a stab at that.
Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Right.
Because those streets are by two means complete street, because there is no way, if you look at that particular corner, there's no way for the pedestrians to walk over there at that high turn. There's no way for the bicyclists to carefully go over that corner. And almost every other week, somebody gets stuck and reverse it. It's a good time to put it in. Because it doesn't, doesn't call, I mean, I don't look at it as, as that as a complete street. It's not a complete street. When every other week, somebody gets stuck and the whole...
And the whole street is...
And the whole intersection is closed for two hours.
Right, while the person figures out how to get over them.
No, they have to call the tow truck and everything, a police department, everybody is there. So even though accident didn't happen, but it caused a situation where it could be unsafe.
I just really like the safe routes to school part. Being a parent, I really appreciate it, the safe route to school part. So, and it's, it's very comprehensive.
Yeah, the safe route to school is a good, good program. And I think our city engineer is doing a good job trying to tap into the funding.
And I'm glad that we included that in the language, that we can continue to seek funding for that and the crossing guard program.
And the thing is, it's very easy, very easy to qualify for that. That's the beauty of that program. Yeah. So I think we have to start thinking about other areas where not close to the street, but away from the street, but the street, still the school kids have to go through there. So maybe they could qualify for the, like, like when I was with the PUC, we did get a lot of funding for the railroad crossings, even though they were not near the vicinity of that. But students were using it occasionally, you know, to cross, to go to their home.
Anything else?
I think that's, that's about it for me and...
Well, it is our third study session on it.
Did we provide you a little bit more information?
You did, yes. Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
We have this. We're going to study sustainability.
Yes.
Good, the next is...
I think we're almost done, right? Okay, yeah. It's not today.
It's not today? Why did I have this?
What are you looking at?
Oh, I thought we were going to study the sustainability.
No, it's not on the agenda.
Ah, we just received it in our packet.
Right, 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 right.
All right.
To prepare us.
I have a gazillion notes.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. So on to items initiated... Okay, so on to items initiated by the staff.
Just a couple of things. One is, last week, two weeks ago, there was the ecology scoping meeting for the, you know, EIR for that project. And that was an interesting meeting. So I'm sure it'll be an interesting EIR process forthcoming.
It was well attended by Little Hollywood.
Little Hollywood, yes, the neighbors of the north in San Francisco.
Must have had 60 people here.
Yeah, because it's right in the neighborhood.
It's right in their neighborhood.
Exactly, so that was interesting. And the city council is still trying to pin down a date of doing the interviews for the vacancy of the commission. So I don't have any, again, formal news to report as to when they may take that action. So I think they're going to make some decisions in terms of schedule upcoming at their meeting next week. I'll keep you apprised what they decide. And I think that's all I have.
I have a question. We received a question from, I think it was Angel Hiba, Angel, asking if we wanted paper copies of the new EIR and its four binders. So the whole, so there's not a particular one binder that we need to look at? We're going to look at all forever?
View the whole four.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, there'll be an executive summary, and but-
No, no, no.
The body of the work is the body of the work.
So we count on you to view each and every page.
No, I was going to get it online, but I was wondering if there was particular one volume I should-
That executive summary will be the most important one.
Of the draft, but even-
We could ask her to, if we could have the executive summary in. It doesn't really matter, does it?
I think we all responded to her inquiry, what we looked for.
I think we did.
Yeah, whatever you, whatever form you would like it in, will accommodate you, so.
Yes, she asked for it, and you responded. I think you responded, and I didn't.
We all did, yeah, I believe.
I'm not sure I was going to ask questions.
Okay. Well, again, it's, you have a little bit of time to decide.
Right.
So when the process going to start for the EIR, for Baylands?
I think the document will actually be published, the final. We're down to the wire a couple of weeks from the copy being published formally. And then the council is, you know, authorized a survey to be taken. That the schedule would allow for that to happen before you start your deliberations or your public hearings in the fall. So I don't have a fixed schedule, but, you know, I think that's, we're looking at, I think, late fall. If I had to guess right now, I'd say to be looking at late fall to get started.
Yeah, that's better anyway, because the summertime, some of us might be gone and all that.
It's summertime, it's to read those four documents.
Yeah.
Says you.
Yeah, that's true.
There's going to be a lot of reading.
Thank you, John. Items initiated by the commission?
I just want to mention something about the city of Mountain View. I was surprised to see that they rejected the Google's proposal for a big campus that Google wanted to build there. And the best, and the idea, and the reason behind that was they really look at how it's going to impact the neighborhood, which was really good, in my opinion, because a lot of big cities don't seem to, you know, think about that. And I'm really concerned about the development in San Francisco, you know. Now, the stadium is gone, how it's going to impact the, our streets, especially Tunnel Road, because that's the only way to get into the freeway, other than there's a little old, you have to go around the shoreline to get into that. And that road is completely dilapidated. So I don't know whether we will have any, I mean, San Francisco is going to ask our opinion or not, City of Brisbane. But if not, I think the city should send some kind of document, you know, should ask participation in their EIR, and raise our concerns. I think it should go through city council, I think. It's going to have a big impact, and Geneva intersection will not come, there's no way in sight for the Geneva intersection that can reduce the traffic impact. So without that, they're proceeding the whole development. And also, the other area, the, what's the, the, there's a just an area that was, no, the-
Executive Park?
Hunter's Point.
Hunter's Point Candlestick, huh?
So that, and also the Candlestick Park. Those two big developments, where are they going to put all the traffic? Or right on the, on the, our streets, or what?
Well, a lot of that's been studied, obviously, those projects. Both had EIRs, Executive Park, Schleg, Hunter's Point Candlestick. There's also the By County Transportation Study that looked at sort of a suite of improvements that would be required for transportation and transit to serve all the development, kind of at that county line on both sides, you know, Baylands and adjacent San Francisco projects. So, I mean, I think there's a fairly good idea of how you can make transportation work. I think it's going to be a matter of the timing of the improvements. You know, it's predicated, certain things need Geneva, certain things need the new interchange at, you know, up instead of Beatty up there. Certain, the BRT, they want to do a BRT line between Balboa Park and extended across over to these new neighborhoods to the east. So, I mean, there's a lot of pre-planning that's already happened. It's just a matter now, really, is the funding going to come together to allow for these improvements to happen in a very timely way? That's the really the challenge.
My concern is, before the improvements are made, the developers are already, the whole stadium is gone. They're ready to start the construction. And the buildings are there before the improvements are in place. So that will be a big, you know. Right now, if you go in the commute hours on Bay Shore, two or three signals back, the traffic backs up, you know.
Well, part of it is that lighting system, they have the red lights. Now that they have the red lights to go into the freeway, I noticed that the, you know, it's really backed up. It takes a lot longer to get on.
The red light is there because, one of the reasons was the muñoz light rail system. And that causes problems too, because it adds another few minutes to the signal timing. And it's a very dangerous intersection, if you look at it, because the cars and trains and everything is coming from all different directions there. But-
We'll have to see, I mean, most of, you know, going onto the freeway now has little red lights. And I've noticed since that's gone in, that now there's-
That's going to back it up, too.
I mean, it's really backing up, I mean, for-
Yeah, I don't-
I, I mean-
I really don't know what the logic behind that was.
I don't understand, because-
Because they have the red lights right in this intersection here, we're going southbound, and there is only one car going there. And you want a red signal light there? I don't know why they spend all this money for the, you know, they should have put it in the intersections that need, do some study to see how, what are the backing there, rather than spending, and I'm sure they spent a lot of money on that, putting that light. We cannot put a signal light at Bay Shore and San Bruno, because it's expensive, and if you look at the backing there, it's a lot more dangerous than what they did here. I don't know the logic behind that. And another thing they did is, the 380 to 101 merger, they put a signal there, you know. And also, another thing they did is, they have two cars pour a green. Majority of the people don't look at the two car sign, they still go one. As a result, the lines back up. I always used to tell Caltrain, you have to have a consistency. People, once they see certain things, it's stuck in their brain, like this, like the carpool lane, two or more, right? But some places, they make it three or more. So a lot of people don't pay attention, and they wind up getting the ticket. So in, and FHW always insisted that there should be a consistency in your signage, anything, because people, once they get used to it, that's what they would follow, we are like herds, you know. So, but then they put the signals everywhere, including the very seldom abused intersection.
Okay.
And I don't know funding for that came from where. Probably federal government paid for that, you know.
So before we leave, I'd like to read the appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council not later than 15 calendar days, 10 calendar days for subdivision and sign applications after the commission's action. An application form fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the community development department at 415-508-2120. Someone make a motion to adjourn?
I guess Ms. Parker is making all the motions.
I'm looking for the date. I make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of May 28, 2015, at 7:30 PM.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.